Thank you for, everybody in attendance. This is the Growth Planning Committee meeting for the Town of Kennebunk dated May 7th, 2024, Tuesday. We'll start the meeting by going around in introductions. I'll start on my side, James McMahon.
Jane Evelyn.
Cody Abrupta, Licensed Professional Civil Engineer from the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. I'm the speaker for tonight.
Mary Beth Gilbert.
Liz Johnson.
Galen Wibley, Director of Planning and Development for the Town of Kennybunkport.
We have a couple guests in the audience. If they want the opportunity, they can tell us who they are. If not, we'll move forward.
Paul Hogan's here on remote.
Oh, perfect. Paul, are you in attendance tonight?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't want to trump your leadership. If you want to orchestrate the meeting.
It's easier for you to do it.
Okay, fair enough.
Yep.
Okay. First thing on our agenda is to review and approve the minutes from April 2nd, 2024. Is there any discussion on that?
Motion we approve.
Okay. You're a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Anybody opposed? No? Okay. Second on our meeting is Lynn Newsortens, Impact Development Stormwater Presentation by Cody Abrupta.
Yes.
All right. Perfect. All right. Good. From the Maine DEP. So we've been talking about this for a couple weeks, and we're excited to hear some more information, get educated on this. So I will hand the microphone over to you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Good. I've got it up behind me. Perfect.
And I'll put it up on the other screen. It'll be up here, too.
Okay. Perfect. That will be helpful. All right. And then whenever you're ready, you can.
Go to the next one.
We could, we, do you want to start the presentation, or do you want to just go through the slides this way? I'm good either way.
I have no idea what the presentation's about. Just tell me what you want to do.
This is fine, I think. So hopefully, hopefully the people online can see this okay. I'll just do a quick introduction again. My name is Cody Abrupta. I'm a Licensed Professional Civil Engineer, working for the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. I'm a member of the Stormwater Engineering Team, which is a part of the Land Bureau. And today, we're going to be talking about stormwater management and low-impact development. If we could go to the next slide, please? So here's a.
We're seeing the whole screen, not just the slideshow. So if there's a way to just show the program.
Is that, is that all right? Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, it's easier.
Because I know what the slides are. It's still, it is helpful to see whatever other people are seeing. So what's he seeing?
I have no idea what he's seeing. He says he's seeing the whole screen.
Yeah, I see, I see the entire, you know, not a slideshow, but all of your file, home, insert, draw, the whole.
Oh.
All right.
There we go. Nice.
All right. But they can't. Great. Go ahead.
That's great. Thanks. Whoops.
Everything good?
You can see it, Paul.
One moment, please.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Let's just leave it like that.
Okay. Excellent. So here's a quick overview of what the presentation is going to cover. I'm first going to talk about stormwater management 101, just, you know, to get everybody up to speed on what that is. I'll give a little bit of an introduction into low-impact development. I'll talk a little bit about green infrastructure, which is a major component of low-impact development. And then I will offer some examples of low-impact development, and then give just some final thoughts. So we can go to the next slide?
I won't miss a band.
Maybe just have to click on it again. There you go. Perfect. Okay. So stormwater management 101, it starts with the water cycle. This is something that pretty much everyone's learned through, well, throughout your schooling, elementary school, high school, whatever it is. You know, you've got your condensation in the atmosphere. The water falls to the surface via precipitation, whether it's rainfall, or snowfall, or something else. Some of that water infiltrates into the ground. Some of that water runs off and collects in streams, lakes, rivers, eventually out to the ocean, where it evaporates, and the process starts all over again. One of the important things to consider is we often learn about the natural water cycle, but when, you know, human beings develop the environment for their, for their needs and purposes, it alters the water cycle to one degree or another, which is going to be talked about in the next slide. But basically, what you're seeing is a little bit more stormwater runoff, a little bit less infiltration, and then just some changing dynamics with evaporation. So if we could go to the next slide? So here's a good example of what we call pre-development versus post-development. Now, pre-development is basically what happens in a, just a natural environment, a natural setting. Generally speaking, there's about 40% of the, of the precipitation that hits the surface will evaporate out of the system. Oftentimes, that's through evapotranspiration from the plants. Sometimes it's direct evaporation from water bodies. About 50% of the, the water that hits the surface will infiltrate into the ground. Now, that is a little bit dependent on the soil type. It's dependent a little bit on the type of vegetation you have, but generally speaking, about half the water will infiltrate into the ground. Some of it will be in the form of shallow infiltration, which is basically what the, what's going to make the soil moist, and what the root structures of the plants are going to uptake. And then some of that is deep infiltration, which is what we would consider as groundwater recharge. It kind of goes into the groundwater and replenishes aquifers, things of that nature. And then, again, in a pre-development, or in a natural setting, about 10% of the water will run off of the surface and then end up in, you know, streams, rivers, lakes, what have you. In the post-development scenario, or in the, you know, after we've done development, there are a couple things that change. Now, evapotranspiration, or just evaporation in general, is pretty close to the same, because I don't know if you know, but when it's warm and the sun is beating down on the pavement, it does a really good job of evaporating water. But one of the things that comes with development is the addition of impervious surfaces. Now, impervious surfaces are basically anything that doesn't allow stormwater to infiltrate into the ground. So that doesn't necessarily have to be pavement. It could be rooftop. It could be anywhere where the ground has been compacted to a degree that there's really not a lot of infiltration happening. And so because the water's not allowed to infiltrate into the ground, like it would in a natural situation, there's a lot more stormwater runoff. And that stormwater runoff has some implications to it. So if we go to the next slide, we'll start talking about some of those.
So Cody, just.
Oh, yes, sure.
A quick question. On the, on the last slide.
All right. We'll back up.
Sorry. On the last slide, so what's the reason for the 30, the reduction in the evapot?
In the evaporation? So that's, that's not actually a good example there, evapotranspiration, because evapotranspiration specifically refers to the vegetation. There is evaporation happening from the, you know, from the rooftops and from the pavement surfaces, but often with development, there's a significant reduction in the amount of vegetation that's available to transpire that, that water. And so there is a little bit of a reduction, mostly because there are, there's less vegetation available. And our paved surfaces or our impervious surfaces aren't as efficient at evaporating water out of the system, if that makes sense.
Okay.
And I should mention that you can feel free to stop me and ask questions. I've done presentations both ways, where I wait to the end, and I do it during the presentation. I find oftentimes, people forget if you have to wait all the way till the end. So feel free to interrupt me. One of the implications of increasing stormwater runoff is, you know, as stormwater flows across our paved surfaces or our impervious surfaces, it picks up pollutants. And so there's a number of different pollutants that we're concerned about. Chlorides are one of the most significant pollutants, and, I mean, Maine still experiences winters, so we kind of need our road salts in order to, you know, create a safe community. And so it's kind of a challenge in balancing that, because there aren't any stormwater control measures that can really effectively remove chlorides from the stormwater. So that's a pollutant of concern. Another one is hydrocarbons. You know, as you might expect, our vehicles aren't perfectly maintained, and so there's always going to be some level of pretty colors after it rains in your parking lot. Trash, litter, sediment, all of these are additional pollutants. And then there's a certain class of pollutants that are called nutrients. And so nitrogen and phosphorus are two examples of what we would consider nutrients, but they also can be pollutants. And the reason why that is, is because, you know, these things, these are things that, that life and the ecosystems need in order to thrive. However, if you have too high of a concentration of either of these nutrients, it can actually cause the wrong species to thrive. So for example, phosphorus in lake watersheds is the limiting nutrient. So in a lake watershed, if you have excess phosphorus, the algae in that system is going to eat up all of that phosphorus and cause an algal bloom. And algal blooms have a lot of negative effects. There are some positives. I mean, some things eat the algae, and good for them, but also it, it uses up a lot of the oxygen in the water, and it can shade out some of the, you know, important keystone species, and so it can pose a lot of problems. Not to mention, you know, nobody likes, if you've got a lake house, no one likes seeing, like, dirty green water. You want to see that nice, clear water, right? It's good for property values, and it's good for recreation. Same thing with nitrogen in coastal ecosystems. So in coastal ecosystems, specifically salt marshes and, and bays and, and that nature, nitrogen is the limiting factor, is the limiting nutrient. And so coastal algae will take in that nitrogen, and that will call, cause algae blooms. And so that has negative ramifications for specifically eelgrass is a species that the Maine DEP and, and others are really concerned about, because it's a keystone species. It's a really important plant for the, the coastal ecosystem. And so if you're having harmful algal blooms in those coastal ecosystems due to an increase in the nitrogen, it could, you know, it could pose some problems. So pollutants are one of the major concerns when it comes to stormwater runoff. If we go to the next slide, I'll explain another one of the challenges. So you'll have to bear with me. I'm an engineer. We like graphs and charts and stuff like that. This is a hydrograph, and so I'll explain kind of what this means. On the Y-axis, you have runoff, and it's specifically runoff rate, usually in cubic feet per second. And then on the X-axis, which is the bottom, you have time. And so you see there are two different curves. The blue one represents pre-development, or what would happen in a natural undeveloped state, and the red dashed line is post-development. So what would happen in a more urbanized or a more developed landscape? And so you can notice two major differences. One, the pre-development line is, is much shorter, so there's a lot less running off the site. And that is specifically because of the ability to infiltrate into the ground. So you're losing a lot of that volume that would normally runoff into the ground as infiltration. Another thing that you'll notice is that there's a reduced time to the peak flow. So the peak happens sooner in the post-development situation, because pavement does a really good job of moving water. We're good at moving water to where we want it to go. So we can pave that surface, and we can throw a pipe in there, and take that water from that parking lot, throw it through the pipe system, and send it out to the river, so that way it's out of the way, doesn't cause any flooding issues. Nature does it a little bit differently. It puts a lot of vegetation in the way, so the water is slowed down, and it has to travel through that vegetation, where it's also, some of it is infiltrating into the ground, some of it is evaporating out of the system. But generally speaking, it's a lot slower. It takes longer for, for rain, rainwater or stormwater runoff to cross a vegetated path than it does an impervious surface, where there's not as much impedance to that flow. And so the reduction in the time to the peak runoff and the increase in the peak runoff, that can basically create like a flashy environment, for lack of a better term, something that, that floods quickly, or you see a lot of water being directed to certain pieces or components of infrastructure very quickly, which can have some problems, especially if that infrastructure ends up getting clogged. And so under the current stormwater regulations, at least for larger development, one of the requirements is that they actually have to match the, the peak flow. So this graph, the, the red dashed line, would actually have to be at the same height as the blue line. And the reason for that is they're trying to mimic that pre-development condition, so that way you're seeing less of an impact, less runoff, or less peak runoff rates. And that's just a hedge to try and avoid some of those issues. So that's specifically for larger developments, like anything that's proposing more than three acres of impervious surfaces, they're going to be required to meet what's called the flooding standard at the state level, which will require them to match or reduce their peak runoff flow. I know that's kind of complicated, but it's, it's some good context.
Regarding, regarding that, Cody, the flood events, is that for a 25-year storm, or is that, what year storm is that calculated at Maine DEP?
Yeah, so that's a good question. For the flooding standards specifically, the, the storm events, or the, the return interval storm events, I guess basically, maybe I should explain what that is. When someone says a two-year storm, or a five-year storm, 10-year, whatever it is, they're referring to the probability that a storm of that size will hit in that time period. So a two-year storm, in theory, happens once every two years. There's a, there's a one-in-two-year probability that that storm is going to happen, whereas a 100-year storm event, you know, you only have like a 1% probability of that storm hitting in that time period. And so for the flooding standard, you're required to match or reduce your peak flows for the two-year storm, the 10-year storm, and the 25-year storm events. And so that's how the rules are written currently. Now, I know there are some state agencies, like Maine DOT, for some of their critical infrastructure, they're designing out to the 50-year and 100-year storm events. Some infrastructure, like wastewater treatment facilities, are being required to design out to the 50 and 100, 100-year storm event, just to add an, an additional level of resiliency for those larger, more intense storm events.
So I shared, Liz has it currently, but I shared Kennybunkport's recent storm charts. That way you can see, it's on the, the column section is your year of storm, and then the duration of the storm is on the, the Y-axis. And for the Town of Kennybunkport, ours is a 24-hour storm for 10 and 25 years, is what your current regs are for site plan. And then for subdivision, if it's over 10,000 square feet of impervious surface, they have to plan for a 50-year flood event. So that's for subdivision.
Say that last one again, the last sentence.
If it's 10,000 square feet or more of impervious, they have to put in, they have to design a system for a 50-year flood event.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so another thing that I maybe should mention is part of the flooding standard, and probably what's also included in your town standards, which I haven't read, so I'm not super familiar with it, but oftentimes, we are requiring that developments aren't allowed to flood their primary access road during 25-year or more storm events, for pretty obvious reasons. If you've only got one exit to your subdivision, and the stormwater infrastructure can't handle that intense storm event, and it floods out, you could see some issues with maybe emergency services getting to that, getting to that area. So that's also included in the flooding standard, is the requirement that the stormwater conveyance systems, basically the storm drainage systems, or the actual stormwater treatment systems can handle those really intense storm events. So that way you're not seeing that flooding impact your roadways. Now, there are, I should say, there are some areas in the state where the development's a little bit older, they weren't necessarily designing to the same regulations, and so there are areas of the state where even in like a two-year rainstorm event, you're seeing flooding that could potentially damage or, or impact infrastructure. So it's a challenge that we're facing at a state level, but also at a community level. So different communities have different needs, and it's something that we're trying to address, especially given the recent, you know, significant storm events this winter. I think that's pretty front, front of mind for everybody. We can go to the next slide?
Cody, just in general, and if you're going to talk about this later, then you can delay the answer, but how do you take into account the different types of soils? So, for example, where, where, you know, or sea level, you know, so?
Yeah, so those, so those are two good, those are two important considerations when you're designing not only drainage infrastructure, but really designing development in general. So they're, they're, they're separate. Sea level rise, or sea level in general, is one, is one piece, especially the difference in the tides. I'll answer the soil part first. So soils are differentiated by what's called hydrologic soil group. I know it's, sounds kind of technical, but basically what that means is it's, it's either an A, B, C, or D. A being like your sandier soils that are well-draining, that, you know, water is going to hit that surface, and it's going to have no problem getting into the ground. With a B being more of a sandy loam-type soil, pretty good for gardening, well-draining, but also not super fast. Then you've got your C and D soils, which have a little bit of a higher clay content, a higher silt content. They maybe don't allow as much water into the ground, especially if you've got like a D soil, you're really not getting much infiltration into the ground, unless you've got pretty significant vegetative cover. And so those soil types are pretty well-distributed across the state. You know, you, you could have a, basically an acre of land, and you could have D soils right next to A soils. And so the only way you're really going to be determining that is with the, what is it? The USDA, NRCS websoil surveys. Those are pretty accurate, but also implicit upon development, there's also a lot of requirements to do soil testing. So specifically digging test pits to identify the soils that you have on the site, so that way you can use that for planning and development purposes. So.
Hey, Cody?
Yeah, go ahead.
How does all rock fit into the A, B, C, D? We are a town with a lot of ledge, and all rock, and a lot of blasting to put houses in, in the, in the land that's yet to be developed.
Right, right. And so in the websoil survey, ledge is classified a little bit differently. It's not exactly given a soil group, because, I mean, rock isn't exactly very good at, at infiltrating water. Sometimes the soils are classified by the distance to bedrock, and so you might have a soil that's extremely well-draining, like a, a sandy soil, but there's only like a one-foot distance to bedrock. And in those circumstances, that might actually be classified as a D soil, just because of the depth to A, I forget exactly what the terminology is. I think it's a limiting horizon. I don't know. I'm not a soil scientist. I talked to a bunch of them, and those guys are really great, but I'm not familiar with all their lingo. But yes, if you've got bedrock, that's a, that's kind of a separate challenge, because again, yes, you're going to have difficulty, unless the bedrock is fractured, you're going to have difficulty infiltrating into that surface. Now, depending on the depth to the bedrock, water does a good job of, of, of spreading out laterally, once it does get underneath the surface. So there are cer, certain circumstances where water will infiltrate, and it'll spread out laterally, and then it'll be able to work around that bedrock outcropping. But again, now, you're getting into complicated groundwater movement theory, and that's not exactly my area of expertise. That's more the hydrogeologists. But a good question.
Plays more like a sponge, too. It'll hold a lot of water, too.
Yes.
So it's not, does not necessarily an adverse soil, per se.
Yeah, there, there are definitely challenges to, to working in bedrock. There's also some, some additional, there's benefits, too, because if you're not really getting a lot of infiltration in that area, you know, you don't have to worry about impacting that hydrology in the same way. It's already shedding from that site. You know, bedrock tends to be something good that you can anchor things to, so specifically on coastal areas where coastal erosion is a concern, having ledge or having bedrock actually at the site can actually be a benefit, because it can resist coastal erosion, which is something that, this isn't, again, my area, but the licensing team in the Land Bureau, they're dealing with a lot of coastal shoreline stabilization projects coming in, especially, again, given the recent storm events. So ledge can be a benefit in some cases. It can also be a pain if you're trying to dig down and put in basements, or put in, you know, infrastructure underground, so. Thanks. Yeah, no problem. And so how do we capture and treat the harmful pollutants that are running off that, running off the site from stormwater runoff? How do we slow down the stormwater runoff, so we're not seeing those flashy events and those, those extreme peak flows? And how do we maintain pre-development hydrology? Basically, the goal with stormwater management is to address these three details. And just to speak to that maintaining pre-development hydrology, I know, again, engineers, they have to make up all these really complicated-sounding words, but basically, the idea is, we want this, we want the, the environment to act like a natural environment, even after it's been developed. That's the goal. Because if it acts like the natural environment, even in the post-development scenario, or even after you've done the development, then you're going to see a lot less problems. You're going to see the ability to infiltrate some of that water. You're going to see less running off the site. And so that's kind of the goal of stormwater management. One of the ways that we can approach this is low-impact development. So we can go to the next slide? And so now getting into low-impact development, this is also shortened to LID, so if you hear someone talking about LID, they're probably referring to low-impact development. The fundamental goal of low-impact development, I mean, there are a number of goals, but the, but the primary goal is to mimic that natural hydrology. So by developing a site, you're never going to achieve the same level as a completely undeveloped natural site, but the closer you can get to keeping the same hydrology, the less impacts you're going to see from a stormwater management perspective. And then that's also associated with a number of other benefits that we'll get into a little bit later. Now, how do we go about low-impact development? So there are different thoughts and, thoughts about what it means to be low-impact development. Again, my expertise is stormwater management, and so I approach it really from a stormwater management perspective, which is why I'm talking a lot about hydrology. But there are other aspects of it that I'll touch on. Again, I'm not a licensed professional planner, so I'm just, if I talk about planning stuff, it's, it's more from what other planners have told me, and I'm kind of regurgitating their words. But the way that we approach low-impact development, there's kind of three directions. There's the design phase, planning decisions, the site layout, and green infrastructure. And so one of the challenges with low-impact development specifically is oftentimes, the developer already has an architect onboard, and they've already got their site kind of planned out how they want it to be, before they involve the site engineer, or the engineer that actually is going to lay out the site. And so the reason why that's a challenge is, if an engineer is included sooner, they may be able to say, okay, well, rather than concentrating our stormwater management in just this one corner of the site, in one big system, maybe we can spread it out over the site into smaller systems, which will allow for more space, and it will, you know, allow us to maintain that natural hydrology a little bit better. But oftentimes, at least coming from my, my prior experience in private engineering consulting, it's a lot of, hey, we've got this project, here's the layout, put your stormwater management there. And then it's just trying to cram it in with the space that's left over. So really approaching it from a, a design phase and, and, and planning out the development from the get-go, that can really be beneficial to actually creating a low-impact development. And again, part of that is, you really need the developer onboard. So that's where some of the challenges are. But getting into site layout, we'll talk a little bit about that. That's kind of how the site is set up, and this is, that's a lot on the design engineer, the person doing the site work. And then green infrastructure are basically strategies that we can use to treat stormwater runoff.
So Cody?
Mm-hmm.
Do you, can you just give us like a rough back-of-the-envelope estimate of the things that are listed on this site? What percent would you get of handling your, roughly, right? Like, on the rain gardens, do they make a 5% impact? Are you looking them to do like a 20% impact? I, you know, I'm just trying to, I see all the different things, but I'm not sure the percent impact.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a good question. So I guess. So I guess kind of to approach it this way, the site that's shown on the right of this image, I would consider that a true low-impact development site. It's 100% low impact. As far as the specific treatment measures, the rain gardens are probably providing treatment for, I don't know, let's say the roof, that lawn area. I'd say they capture maybe, again, like 60 to 70% of the stormwater runoff from this site. If that is truly permeable pavement on the driveway, that probably captures, you know, 10%. And then the open drainage out front will capture a good amount. The rain barrel, that's more, we'll talk about rain barrels in a moment, but that's, you know, that's only going to capture a tiny bit of the stormwater. But really, the fact that you've got some conservation and some vegetation behind the property as well, you know, maintaining that natural vegetation actually has a really big impact. And there are multiple studies that show having good vegetated buffers on any type of development is extremely beneficial from a stormwater management perspective, but also from a biodiversity and other impact perspective. And I'm going to get into some of these details more.
Are those like berms?
It doesn't necessarily have to be. Basically, if you have, let's say you've got a parking lot and it runs off and you've got a wooded area that's even just 50 feet of woods as a buffer, that's a huge benefit to that as far as providing quality treatments, slowing down that stormwater runoff. So even just 50 feet of woods at the bottom of your development site, that can be a major benefit. And that's something that developers or designers will use to their advantage because they can get credit for that in their stormwater management design by using vegetated buffers to treat their stormwater runoff. So if an engineer can take advantage of natural drainage and take advantage of existing vegetation, generally speaking, they'll do it because it's less expensive, unless that land is a premium, which it is often. But then again, you have to weigh the benefit of, okay, well, am I going to get more benefit out of maintaining this vegetative area and losing out on maybe some potential development opportunity there? Or am I going to spend a lot more on a different type of stormwater treatment measure and then take advantage of that vegetated area? It's a balance and it's something that's difficult to square if you don't have all of the details.
What's the impact of the foundation plantings? Is that significant at all?
It depends. A lot of foundation plantings are more just for aesthetics, but they can be, they do offer benefits. It kind of depends on what the type of planting is. It's, the benefits are less stormwater management benefits. It's more biodiversity and ecological benefits than anything, if that makes sense.
Hey Cody, what's an example of a permeable pavement for that driveway?
I'm actually going to get into that later on in the presentation, so I'll save that. Just if you have more questions once I get to that slide, I'm happy to answer those. But let's go to the next slide. And so here are just some examples of the design phase planning decisions. So low-impact development, if you look at specifically what, and I'll talk a little bit more about this later, but what MS4 communities are required to do, they're required to adopt a low-impact development ordinance. And so as part of that, they have a, basically a table or a checklist of items that they need to meet. And so minimize impervious area is one of those items. Now, minimize impervious area isn't exactly clear, specific, or measurable. What does minimize mean? Well, I mean, it depends on who you're talking to. But broadly speaking, minimizing impervious area means, you know, are you really taking advantage of all of the space that you have? So one of the examples would be building vertical. If you're building with multiple floors, you're reducing the footprint in theory, right? You're not sprawling out as much. And so building vertical has benefits in that respect. Obviously, there are other considerations to building vertical. It's not exactly like you want a skyscraper if it doesn't exactly fit into your, you know, community aesthetic. But again, building vertical, generally speaking, will reduce your impervious area footprint. And then if you are required to have impervious surfaces like parking or roadways or driveways, you know, are there opportunities to make those surfaces pervious? So actually design the surface to allow for infiltration, which is something that we'll get into in, I think, two slides. Another thing about the design phase planning decisions are, you know, with the impervious area that you are incorporating, how do we maximize the treatment for that impervious area? So how do we take that impervious area that we're putting on the site and make sure that almost all of it, if not all of it, gets into some type of stormwater management measure? And so one of those, one of the steps that you might do is you might try to take that roof runoff and infiltrate it. Because infiltration is really great at reducing volume, but you don't always want to infiltrate your stormwater because if it's got chlorides in it, again, those chlorides will end up in the groundwater if you're not careful. And so, but roof runoff, I don't know anybody that salts the roof. So that's generally pretty good water to put back into the ground to replenish the groundwater. Utilizing green infrastructure, which again, we'll talk about in two slides. Distributing the treatment throughout the site rather than concentrating it in one location on the site, that's a really good strategy for low-impact development. And then open drainage systems. So rather than having a closed drainage network, which is basically like catch basins and pipes, being able to open that system up and have grassed or vegetated swales, that can be a really big benefit. The challenge becomes, it depends on the actual setting, but the challenge becomes some of those open drainage systems can require a little bit more space than a pipe system would. So there are trade-offs, as always, with any type of development. And then finally, another design phase planning decision might be rainwater capture and reuse. Now, this is listed as an item on basically any reference or any, anything that you read about low-impact development, they're going to mention rainwater capture and reuse. That is a lot more prevalent out west where water is a little bit more of a premium. Also, they don't really have to worry as much about winter in Arizona, so the freezing factor is kind of important to consider. Now, that's not saying that you can't do effective rainwater capture and reuse in Maine or in cold environments. They do it in Canada, so if they can do it there, I'm sure we could figure it out here. It just takes additional planning. There are also a number of buildings in the state that are LEED certified that will capture rainwater and reuse it in their gray water systems, so for flushing toilets and things like that. But again, that is a planning decision that they made before even considering the development. And so it's hard to implement rainwater capture and reuse as a, like, oh yeah, let's just do this, let's just throw that in there. It doesn't really work that way. You need to really be thinking about it ahead of time if that's something that you want to incorporate. So that's just an important point to make. We can go to the next slide. So site layout, this is another way that we can address low-impact development. So part of site layout would be protecting natural drainage features. So for example, wetlands are pretty good at draining a watershed. You know, some of that, some of that area will drain into those wetlands where it's then either captured, treated, or even directed off-site where it will eventually connect up with rivers, streams, ponds, brooks, et cetera. Avoiding and protecting natural resources is really important. So protecting the wetlands, the important wildlife habitat, you know, your streams, by avoiding these features, you're, well, one, you're developing in a less impactful way, but you're also maintaining some of the benefits of those features, which can include drainage, it can include water storage for flooding events. Wetlands are very good at filling up with water during flood events and actually mitigating some of those flooding risks. Another thing that you might consider with site layout is preserving existing vegetation. So only clearing what's necessary. If you look at the example all the way to the right side, conventional design would be to, you know, clear the entire area, then throw up your development, your houses, your driveways, et cetera, and then leave those real nice big lawns. Whereas a low-impact design might do a little bit better of a job of what's called using site fingerprinting, which is really only clearing the extent that you need to in order to get construction vehicles around to develop the site. And the benefit to that is, yeah, you may lose a little bit of your nice expansive green lawn, but you're going to, you know, keep some of that mature vegetation, which offers a bunch of benefits, both ecologically, but also from a stormwater treatment perspective and a flooding perspective. And so there are benefits to that. And especially if you are looking to maintain the scenic character of a specific area, there's a lot of benefit to keeping that natural vegetation. It's also a lot easier to keep mature vegetation than it is to clear an area and then replant with native vegetation. So that's an important consideration to make. And then again, avoiding soil compaction is another thing that we try to do with site layout. So having specific construction entrances, specific storage areas or lay-down areas during the construction phase, so that way it's not, you're not throwing heavy things on basically all of the soils on your site. We're trying to minimize soil compaction so that way it still has the ability to infiltrate. There are ways to decompact the soils after you construct, so, you know, using a rototiller or a larger scale, you know, construction tiller to till the soils, that can do a pretty decent job. Incorporating compost with that tilled soil will actually, you know, further increase the ability of that soil to breathe and, you know, remain as a functional infiltration mechanism. And then there are some just general practices, depending on like the vegetative covering or basically anyone that's done any type of gardening knows that there are ways you can amend your soil to make it a little bit better at providing drainage. But some of those things take a little bit more time, a little bit more money to do. So those are important considerations during your site layout. We can go to the next slide. And then finally, we've got one of the last major components of low-impact development is green infrastructure. Now, green infrastructure are basically practices that use or mimic natural systems to manage stormwater runoff. And there's a number of different examples that would qualify as green infrastructure. I'm going to go into a bunch of them in the next slides, but I'll just briefly run through a few. So bio-retention areas, green roofs, swales, rain gardens, permeable surfaces, all of these are examples of green infrastructure. So getting into more of the specifics, we can go to the next slide. Before, actually, before I talk about the specific green infrastructure measures, I should mention that green infrastructure has a whole host of co-benefits associated with it. So not only does it provide stormwater quality treatment and, you know, reduce flooding impact, but there are also benefits like heat stress reduction or energy savings. So when you're planting a lot of trees, that will, you know, require you to use less air conditioning during the summer months because you're getting some shading associated with it. And again, you know, if you're creating a nice walkable environment that's nice and shaded, people are going to spend more time in that environment, which is a benefit to the local economy. You're getting air quality improvement as well as sound dampening. You're getting the amenity and aesthetic component of green infrastructure because again, people like good landscaping and so that's important. If you care about critters, biodiversity enhancement is a really good component of green infrastructure. We see areas that have a lot of green infrastructure have a much higher prevalence of different species, including endangered species. So for all of those reasons, green infrastructure is a really great option. We can go to the next slide where I'll discuss it a little bit more. So just getting into the specific economic co-benefits, some of my colleagues that talk about green infrastructure, you know, we're scientists and engineers and so we talk really a lot about the ecology aspect, but again, there are a number of economic co-benefits that I don't think get enough credit. So some of the co-benefits include increasing tourism, benefiting pedestrians. Basically, anytime that you're creating an environment where people want to spend time, that's a benefit to you because people that spend time in that environment, they're going to shop in that area, they're going to play with their kids in that area, they're going to frequent that area more. And so you're getting more benefits, you're getting more value out of that space. One of the areas that does this really well, if you just click again, I think it should come up as a picture, is LL Bean in Freeport. And I know it's not Kenny Bunkport, Kenny Bunkport is really great and you have your own awesome shops and all of that, all of those great features. But the LLB campus does a really good job of using green infrastructure to create an environment where people want to spend time. They have a lot of permeable surfaces that reduce some of the flooding impact when it rains. They've got a lot of green space and a lot of plantings, and a lot of those plantings are actually providing stormwater management. They're treating the stormwater runoff from the roof, the road, the parking areas. And so it's just a good local example that we can point to, to show that green infrastructure in general has good staying power and it's good for the local community. We can go to the next slide. Getting into actual specific types of green infrastructure, so there's a whole class of green infrastructure called bio-retention systems. That's basically any type of system that uses vegetation or plantings to provide stormwater quality treatment. So think of, sometimes these are rain gardens, sometimes they're called soil filters, bioswales, even vegetated buffers would qualify as bio-retention systems. The idea is that the vegetation not only provides that aesthetic value, but it's also filtering out some of those nutrients. So just like algae needs phosphorus and nitrogen, well, so do plants. Plants need phosphorus and nitrogen. And so some of that nitrogen and phosphorus that's in the stormwater runoff, that gets taken in by the plant roots and they use that there rather than that ending up in our rivers and in our ecosystem as a whole. You're also getting the physical filtering happening because trash and sediment isn't allowed to pass through the soil, pass through the voids in the soil like water's able to. So you're getting that physical filtering. And then you're also slowing down and cooling off that runoff. Again, I mentioned earlier, paved surfaces get really hot. And so when it rains, that water coming off those surfaces is warmer. And if it's directly connected to your water bodies, there are certain, you know, insects and aquatic species that don't like that sharp change in temperature. And so if you have your stormwater running through the ground, having to slow down, infiltrate through the soil layers, it's not only cooling, it's slowing that runoff. And so it's providing those benefits as well. And if you just click again, you should see some other examples. So this is an example of what we would call a stormwater planter. It's basically something that runs alongside the road in a, this is a more urbanized or a more developed area, and it serves as some separation between your driving areas and your sidewalks. And you can basically tie it into the roadway with curb cuts to treat some of the roadway stormwater runoff. And so if you click again, I think I might have some more examples. Here's a tree pit. So it's basically a way to incorporate street trees, but also provide that watering ability from the stormwater runoff and also give it those nutrients from the stormwater runoff. If you click again, I think I have another example. So this is a larger bio-retention system. It's a larger stormwater planter. The difference between this one and the first one that we looked at is there's separation between the roadway and this planter. So you can actually have parking and get right out of your car onto the sidewalk, but you still have that nice scenic area that's serving as stormwater quality treatment and capturing and collecting that stormwater.
So are those based on like, you know, the year storms too? I'm just curious.
Yes.
I mean, hopefully our downtown never looks that.
Urbanized?
Urbanized. It's time for me to move, but hopefully.
No, yes.
Is that based on like, you know, a certain?
Yes, yes. So all of these systems would be designed to capture a certain volume of stormwater. Oftentimes, there's a depth of at least six inches to capture stormwater runoff. And then depending on, again, this is all kind of on the design engineering phase, but depending on the area that's draining to that specific measure, you might either add additional depth, spread it out a little bit wider so you can receive more water, or you might have an overflow. So once it hits a certain level, it goes into this drain and it either goes to the next system or it leaves the system entirely. So yes, all of these are, they have specific engineering standards that they're trying to meet.
Cool. So Cody, for the pedestrian planters that you showed as an example, how well do they work in Maine with our salt applications?
So that is a challenge. The salting applications can be an issue. One of the ways that Maine communities have been able to kind of combat that issue is by utilizing vegetation that has a little bit of salinity. What's the term I'm looking for? Resistance, yes. Stuff that, yeah. Right, right. So plants that can basically resist or deal with more saline environments. I believe Portland and South Portland have a number of these roadside systems and, I mean, they're well And, I mean, they're well maintained. They seem to be doing well and surviving and thriving. And I sincerely doubt that Portland's not putting down a lot of salt.
But it's still an engineering standard for the Northeast. The same thing with where four months out of the earth, that ground's gonna freeze and he can't, the water's not gonna penetrate.
Yeah, so that is, that is a challenge.
Still an engineering standard.
Yep, there's, there are, yeah, there are engineering standards to follow. And so specifically relating to the freezing, even during the winter, these systems will still provide infiltration. The only time they don't is if you have a drainage issue. So if there's water ponding on the surface and then it freezes, that's when you're gonna run into issues. So you wanna make sure that these systems, again, are being maintained just like any other type of infrastructure we have. So that way, it's functioning properly. But again, yeah, there are definitely concerns with basically any type of stormwater management. You're gonna run into some challenges. And so there are important engineering considerations to make. And so we hope that engineers are designed, not hope, we require engineers to design to specific standards.
So that actually brings up a good question because so now when you, this system is designed, but there's also a long-term impact financially. If, well, for your example against clog, is there the consideration that's taken? Is it taken into consideration that the maintenance of this is gonna be a financial strain on a taxpayer to deal with? Or do we just offset that and let this go to, it looked terrible and then until it's to the point where we gotta fix it? You know, is that part of the submittal of those engineering standards or whatever the plan that's brought together to say, if this happens, if it fails, this is, you know, what we're gonna have to deal with or whatever?
Yeah, you bring up a really good point, which is the, basically the long-term operation and maintenance of the systems.
Set it and forget it type.
Yeah, and so you're basically not gonna find any stormwater management that's set it and forget it. There are certain systems that can go a little bit longer without maintenance. Some of these systems do require a little bit more regular maintenance, but the actual costs and demands of that maintenance are lower. And so, yeah, you may have to visit it more than once a year, but the actual maintenance that you have to do on the site is less than a more complicated system where, you know, yeah, maybe you only have to visit it once a year, but you've gotta do X, Y, Z. And so, but you do bring up an important challenge that basically we face in the field of stormwater management as a whole, which is making sure that the systems are being maintained over the long term and not costing the community, you know, undue resources. Because again, you know, we want, we want these systems to be designed well. So that way you aren't having to, you know, shell out a bunch of money just to make sure that it's giving you the bare minimum. There are also, another important point, I guess, would be to bring up that there are impacts if you don't have a system that's robust like this. So you're, you are seeing some negative impacts by not having these systems. So that's an important thing to weigh in. I find that any good engineer submitting these things will have plans for long-term inspection and maintenance. And those will be agreed upon ahead of time, whether it's town officials or property managers or whatever. And there are mechanisms at the state level to ensure that they are continuing to maintain those systems. I won't get into those right now because I don't wanna bore the heck out of you, but I'll get into.
Service contracts?
Yeah, service contracts. Yeah, there's all sorts of stuff.
To expand on that point though, regarding the maintenance. I know your question, Jim, was more focused on public infrastructure. But there's also the private as well, the individual, which in Kenny Bunkport, if we have a subdivision plan that is submitted, they have to submit a stormwater maintenance agreement on how they're going to maintain, even their conventional systems right now. So it's not just the public sector, you know, our public streets, but it's also on the private individual to maintain these systems in the future.
Yep, yep. And again, it's a fine balance that we're kind of always trying to, we're kind of always battling it out, trying to make sure that the systems are being designed well, maintained well, and all of that. We can go to the next slide. So getting into porous pavement a little bit. So porous pavement doesn't necessarily have to specifically mean asphalt. There's porous concrete. There are permeable pavers. There are grass pavers. There's a bunch of different terminology for basically the same idea. The idea is, let's create an impervious surface, but allow void spaces so that it's not impervious. It actually allows water to drain through the surface. Whether those void spaces are spaces between paving stones, maybe it's planted spaces between concrete blocks like in item number two in that middle photo. Or maybe it's actual conventional asphalt that just has fewer fines in it. So there are void spaces for that water to travel through. Now, porous pavement is considered green infrastructure, but it doesn't necessarily, it's not necessarily green in the sense that it incorporates vegetation. It can incorporate vegetation. But the reason why it's considered green is because it mimics that pre-development hydrology. It allows the stormwater to infiltrate through the surface like it would in a natural environment. And from that infiltration, you're getting some physical filtering of the stormwater. You're slowing down that runoff because it has to take time to pass through that media. You're cooling it. You know, porous pavement or porous pavement types are cooler than asphalt in the summer and they're warmer in the winter because there's a reservoir underneath. If you look at the bottom right picture, that's kind of a cross-section. That reservoir is often much thicker than that. But that's a cross-section of what a porous pavement might look like. So there's a stone reservoir underneath it. And so in the summer, that allows a little bit of airflow. So that surface cools down significantly compared to your standard asphalt parking lot. Whereas in the winter, it actually is a little bit warmer than baseline temperatures because it's got that underground reservoir that's providing a little bit of ambient warming. And so one of the benefits actually to porous pavement is that it actually can melt snow faster than your standard pavement. And you're not getting any black ice because the way that black ice forms is you've got your meltwater and it runs across the surface and then it refreezes overnight. Well, if you have a porous surface, once that meltwater melts, it goes right into the surface and it's stored into that reservoir underneath it. And so now you're no longer getting that black ice. Now again, there are other challenges with porous pavement. I'm not trying to paint this out as the glorious, you know, 100% solution for all your problems. You know, you can't use chlorides as, or road salts on these surfaces because it will degrade the quality of the surface course. Same deal when you're plowing these surfaces. You just have to be a little bit more mindful. You can't just grind your plow right on the bottom of this. So we typically see contractors raising their plows a few inches when they're plowing these surfaces.
Or repaving every couple of years.
Repaving every couple of years. Actually, the better option is to, is to vacuum these surfaces. So using a regenerative air vacuum. It's basically a street sweeper. And there are new methods that are being pioneered specifically by University of New Hampshire that utilizes a smaller vacuum type system in a power washer to actually restore these pavements, which I'm really looking forward to hearing more about. I have a meeting with them in September, so.
So is there any community that has put these in?
Yeah, there are a number of communities in Maine. I see a number of projects and I approve a number of projects that utilize these systems. But if I'm, if I wanna point you to like a really big example, Main Mall Road in, what is that, South Portland? It's in the Long Creek watershed. They actually have a large section of roadway that is porous pavement. And they've done, it's been a case study for a long time. It's lasted just as long as the regular pavement between repavings. And just with the general regular maintenance that they're doing, it's performed very well. I think also the naval yard has a section of, a large section of porous pavement that they use. And they're running heavy equipment over it and it's still performing well. There are a number of other examples, but those are the two big ones that come to mind. And I've seen presentations given by the design engineers and by the operators on those sites talking about how the systems have performed to expectation, which is good to hear. It's always good to have an example that works.
And how do we look at it? Like if we want to do a parking lot, say for example, the parking lot out here, what would you expect for the amount of runoff that you would be able to capture and infiltrate into the ground?
So depending on the type of porous pavement or porous surface you're using, specifically like if you're using a porous asphalt or a porous pavement.
Say porous asphalt.
Yeah, so if you're using something like that, the infiltration rate on those things is like a thousand inches an hour, which is insane. Now again, it clogs up over time, but even if it's 90% clogged, you're still getting significant infiltration through these systems. And so they're able to receive a lot of water. Now, what you're limited by is the depth of the reservoir underneath it as well as the, whether the system is infiltrating into the ground or whether it's being collected and sent out with pipes. So there are a number of different limitations to that. But as far as the surface itself, it can infiltrate basically any amount of water you can throw at it if it's in a good condition. I've seen the, what is it? The concrete trucks filled with water just dump clean water out and right beneath the spout, you have like a footprint that's, you know, maybe the size of this area in front of my podium that's wet and it doesn't extend past that. It goes right into the system. So it's pretty impressive what they can accomplish with this as far as an ability to infiltrate. Now, if you were to either replace a parking lot or design a parking lot, what I would recommend is not using all porous pavement. In the interest of cost engineering, I would recommend leaving maybe strips for the driving surface and then only making the spaces porous pavement. Because then you're gonna save a little bit of money on having to put in that reservoir, but you're still gonna be able to capture a significant amount of the rainwater runoff. And that's something that we see all the time. Engineers much smarter than myself figured that one out a long time ago. That rather than make the whole parking lot porous, let's just make pieces of it porous and design it to drain in those directions. So that way we can save the client money and we can save on the cost of materials and limit the amount of maintenance that we need to do. And that works very well.
And when you're looking at your case studies and stuff, what, so can you sort of define a time of when it starts to clog? Is it five years, 10 years, a year?
Well, so these systems start clogging immediately, but in order to actually fully clog, it takes, it all depends on the use of it. So for example, a roadway is gonna clog up a little bit faster just because there's more vehicle traffic over it. Whereas a parking lot, it might be a number of years before you actually start seeing an impact on the performance. But again, fortunately, most of these systems can be almost immediately remedied by providing some level of maintenance by vacuuming the surface once a year, twice a year, whatever it is. You know, once after the winter is over and then once at the end of summer. You know, that restores the pavement to a degree that it's almost not noticeable, any type of impacts that have built up over that period of time.
The town of Brunswick Police Department, part of their parking lot is actually that surface. So, you know, maybe you could reach out to them and ask them because that's probably been there, the new police department's been there maybe, I don't know, probably going on 10 years now. So, but they'd be able to, you know, tell you the maintenance.
And there are a lot of folks that have been using this. Yeah.
You know, but it's, if you look at the police department, there's, they have regular pavement around it and then there's an upper parking lot where the employees typically park when they're on duty. And that's made of that material.
Things to think about for your possible new town hall too, on incorporating some of this technology.
Where all my questions are coming from.
The other thing I wanted to bring up and it's just a good discussion point from a town planner perspective, and this is a Maine DEP question, and I'm sure you get this question a lot, Cody. How is, I know how the pavers with the grass in between, how they're considered for shoreline zoning purposes, but how is the pervious pavement considered for shoreline zoning purposes of calculating non-vegetative surfaces?
So that's a really good question. I'm not super familiar with shoreline zoning. I'll be completely honest with you there. As far as triggering certain like jurisdictional thresholds with the DEP, we consider these porous pavement surfaces as impervious surfaces just for jurisdictional purposes. But then we consider them to be self-treating if they're designed in accordance with the standards. And so basically what that means is, you know, if you're developing a site and you're maybe, let's say the cutoff is like one acre of impervious surface for most projects. So let's say you're putting in 0.9 acres of building and then you're gonna put another acre of parking, but you're like, well, I can just make it porous pavement and skirt that rule. We don't let that fly because the idea is if you don't maintain the system, it's just gonna become normal pavement. And so we don't want.
One step up above gravel.
Yeah, yeah. We don't want you getting away with more development than you're allowed. So for jurisdictional purposes, we consider it impervious. I don't know what shoreline zoning does, but I've got some friends over in that department. I can ask them and get back to you guys on that.
Well, I did ask them the question for the grass pavers. And that, they are considered non-vegetative surfaces. DEP has done a lot of studies. And people don't maintain the grass in between them and then it just, it's just gravel. Yep, so, but for the pervious, I'm not sure. I never got a definitive on that side. Again, it's all about maintenance.
Yeah, I can talk to Colin or Jess over in shoreline zoning and they'll be able to get me an answer. Those grass pavers, by the way, really, really great for like fire lanes and overflow parking. But I've been told, and this is not from personal experience, that, you know, just for your normal parking lots, maybe not a good idea because high heels don't do well on that surface. And again, not from personal experience, but I've been told that that, high heels and grass pavers don't exactly go well. All right, let's go to the next slide. So green roofs.
Before we go there?
Yeah, sure.
So like in the beach community, 20 years ago, nobody had a paved parking lot because we're basically on a sand dune until we get to ledge. And so over time, as people have redeveloped their houses, there, you know, there's much more pavement going in. So I'm interested in hearing your comparison between, and in terms of planning, a stone, you know, just the old driveway with dirt and stones, which of course gets compacted over time versus the pavers versus your porous pavement versus, you know, basic asphalt or concrete.
Right, that's a good question and that's an important thing to consider. So yes, if you've got your standard gravel lots or your standard dirt roads or dirt lots, those do get compacted over time anyway. So it just basically functions as impervious cover, just less smooth. As far as like what surface would work better in like a coastal setting that would still potentially allow infiltration, but would act as a nice parking surface, you would basically want to get those, what, those grass pavers. But rather than filling them with grass, I mean, that's not gonna grow in a sandy environment. You just, you just don't have the nutrient levels. But just leaving it sand in between those or even just leaving it gravel in between those, that will allow for that infiltration, depending on the underlying soils. There are other systems as well that maybe not, aren't concrete systems, but they are either HDPE, I forget exactly, something plastic. But there are surfaces that they make that basically have voids in them that you can fill with materials. Now oftentimes, they want you to fill it with, you know, loam and then you seed it with grass. But in a coastal setting, you could easily just throw sand in there.
Is that the geotextile?
Yeah, geotextile like surfaces. And those work really well. If you've got sand in there, that will provide that ability to infiltrate while also maintaining the structural integrity that you can park your vehicles on it, you can drive on it, you know, things of that nature. Actually, Acadia National Park uses those for walkways. And rather than fill it with sand, they fill it with stone and so, or like millings. And it does provide a level of infiltration, but it also provides that structural form that's important. Because if you just have a stone or milling, that stuff will wash away depending on the flows or people just walking over it over a certain period of time. But there are, there are options. I can send you a couple of examples. I think I have a few on one of my drives somewhere.
And you could plow that.
Yes, yeah. Those surfaces are plowable and you don't really have to worry about impacting the, or clogging the surface depending on what type of system you use. So just getting into green, yep, no problem.
We count asphalt the same as anything else in a shoreline zone, which seems counterintuitive, but.
That seems counterintuitive. That seems counterintuitive to me and I, I don't know, I could be wrong. But I think shoreline zoning would be amenable to exploring other options if you had the right voice advocating for it.
And a lot of them, Paul, are not, either they're non-conforming lots. They exceed the maximum lot coverage, especially at Goose Rock Beach because of how small the lots are. So that's why their percentage of impervious surface is so large and they can continue to maintain that large impervious surface because they're grandfathered.
Yeah, doesn't that, isn't that something grandfathered? But yeah, so again, I wish I knew more about shoreline zoning. It's just not my area of operations. But I'm happy to talk with my colleagues in that department. So getting into green roofs, again, green roofs are a really good, like, a really good item to point to as low impact development. As far as like their prevalence in the state of Maine, they're not as common. Mostly just because it's expensive to install a green roof. It's not something you can just retrofit or put in on existing roof structure. You really need to do the structural engineering to design it to make sure that the system is able to support not only the vegetation, but also the snow loading that we would anticipate or expect in the state of Maine. And there are green roofs in the state. I think University of New England has one or a few.
So when we were talking about residential development though, how many, how many have you seen that? Because we keep referring back, this is a lot of public infrastructure we keep referring to. I want to hear some of the stuff that applies to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Really applies here.
So really as far as like a public infrastru-, sorry, as far as residential infrastructure, your porous surfaces and your bio retention are going to be your biggest, your two biggest green infrastructure type systems that you're going to use. I'm just mentioning this because whenever someone says low impact development, they're going to bring this up and it's good for you to know some of the important details about it. So that way you can speak on it from an educated perspective. Because again, if you have somebody that comes to you, hey, planning board, I really, you know, I'm really passionate about these green roofs. I want to equip you with.
Show me the money.
Yeah, yeah, true, true. And so these systems are great. I mean, they do work really well. They capture and filter stormwater at the source, so right on the roof. It drastically increases the evapotranspiration. It actually provides additional insulation benefits to the building. So you can reduce your heating costs and cooling costs. And it provides a nice aesthetic benefit. But again, as I mentioned earlier, it's an expensive system. It's usually only utilized on, well, projects that maybe have a lot of capital, like universities and, and things of that nature. But again, it's an important thing to consider. Again, I think, this is just my personal opinion. I think you get more bang for your buck with like solar panels on your roof than you do with a green roof. Just my personal opinion. We can go to the next slide. And so here are just some examples of what we could consider low impact development. This actually comes from the Kennebunkport Historical Society. I was looking on that webpage for at least an hour putting this presentation together because there are so many really great photos. Now, I understand that this is Main Street in Kennebunk, but this photo comes from the Historical Society. And I just want to point out that there are, you know, there are sets of vertical constructions. So you're able to reduce that impervious footprint while also, you know, increasing tax revenue there with your additional commercial and residential space. There's also public transportation in this example. So there were those electric trolleys. Public transportation is kind of like an indirect measure of low impact development because it actually does lead to a reduction in parking need, which therefore reduces impervious surfaces. And then also in this specific example, there are mature trees that were either preserved or if they weren't preserved and they were planted, they've definitely been well maintained in this example. And so those trees are providing better stormwater quality treatment, but then they're also helping maintain the local ecosystem. They're providing those shading benefits. And so those were some of the details that we talked about when it comes to low impact development. We can go to the next slide. This is not a historical example. This is just a rendering. But this is another example of what might be more of a residential. This, this might be a more compact residential where you're maybe doing multifamily or condominium type development, but it's still an example nonetheless. And you've got, again, vertical development by adding additional floors rather than sprawling out. You're reducing your footprint. In this specific one, you've got rainwater collection and reuse. Again, as far as in the state of Maine, it's not as pertinent, but it is something that other communities really do rely on. And those systems could be used for watering a community garden, watering your own garden. Even depending on the size of the system and the amount of hydraulic head that you get, you could even use it to wash vehicles. There's actually an example of a school that has a rainwater capture cistern and they use that cistern to wash cars for their local car washes, for the fundraisers, for all like the high school sports teams and stuff like that. And then all the water drains to a rain garden, which removes, I think it's like ninety-five percent of the surfactants in the soapy water runoff. So it's actually a pretty cool system. It's, they call it a green car wash. But anyway, sorry, that's a tangent. In this example, again, you've got sidewalks. So you've got a walkable environment, which allows you less reliance on personal vehicles and you can get a reduction in pervious cover. You can also make these sidewalks pervious. So it's an opportunity to incorporate pervious cover. Again, whether that's pervious concrete, porous asphalt or some other mechanism, even just a gravel sidewalk with a little bit of a stone filter bedding, that's less compacted than your standard, you know, concrete sidewalk.
You actually bring up a good point in sort of to what Paul was saying. That would actually be, you know, if down the road, down at the beach, if they decide they're going to redo the sidewalks, that would probably be a perfect place to do it. You know, redo the sidewalks with that kind of material in relation to the hard stuff that's there now, you know?
It definitely would reduce the impact and it would allow that, that level of infiltration, especially during like those more extreme flooding events. It might do a good number on that. And you might see a little bit more resilience in that respect. Another thing about this graphic is it's incorporating grass separation. So the driveways are a little bit more narrow. Rather than just paving that entire surface, you're adding a little bit of grass in between, which then again can be planted. Or even if it's just left as grass, that's still providing a certain level of stormwater infiltration. In this specific example, you've got open channel conveyance. So it may not seem like it's that big. Depending on the size of the road, it might be a little bit bigger than that. But you've got basically open channels rather than curbs and catch basins. And again, that offers an additional level of stormwater infiltration ability as well as evapotranspiration. And those open channel systems actually do better in intense storm events because they can actually hold more water than your pipe systems and they are less prone to clogging where a catch basin might be very prone to clogging depending on the sizing of the grade. This example also includes green infrastructure. So you've got like a bio retention system that's in the front of this feature. And so those types of systems that are well distributed across the site can achieve the same stormwater quality treatment that those larger systems would, but it's less concentrated. So it's well dispersed throughout the site. It maintains the scenic characteristic a little bit better. And then this example also has a good amount of preservation of the native plants. You can see dense forest in the background and so that's another example. We can go to the next slide. I think, yeah, here's one more example. And then I know, I know I'm using a lot of urban examples here. But again, I think it adds some important context and it's, it gives you some things to think about. I understand that Kennebunkport, I mean, dare I say ideally will not have this level of urban development, at least the vertical development in the background. But, you know, here are more examples of vertical development. You've got pervious pavement opportunities. Even, you know, the surface that they're walking on in the middle there appears to be pavers. And again, you can utilize strips of porous pavement or pervious pavement to provide that water quality treatment while also minimizing the area that you actually need to make that pervious material, which can lead to cost savings. These are also incorporating, you know, green infrastructure, vegetative plantings to provide stormwater quality treatment. This has an example of the tree pits. And then again, as I mentioned, having a walkable or a bikeable environment allows you to be less reliant on vehicles, which not only reduces parking needs, but it also reduces pollutant loading because vehicles are a pretty big vector. Motor vehicle surface in general is a pretty big vector of stormwater pollutants. And so if we go to the next slide, this should be me wrapping things up. So just generally, what I'd like you to take away is that low impact development has a lot of benefits to the community and the broader ecosystem. There are some things to be aware of at the state and the, at the state level. So at the state level, we currently don't have a low impact development standard. We've got an option for developers to use to get some credit, but it's basically never used just because the way that it was written is very vague. There are certain LID practices that are easier in some environments, but challenging in other environments. And so it becomes difficult at the state level to regulate these things because different communities might be able to take advantage of one feature, whereas another feature may be incredibly difficult to take advantage of. And so painting the entire state with a broad brush is quite difficult when it comes to having a state level standard. That being said, we are currently updating our stormwater management rules and there will be some form or another of a low impact development standard at the state level included in that because there's immense pressure from stakeholders to include that. And those stakeholders do include the MS four communities, which are currently required to adopt a low impact development standard. And so they're having a lot of trouble with that just because there's been some pushback from certain stakeholders. And so basically the issue they're having is creating a clear, specific and measurable standard. Because as we've kind of discussed, low impact development is kind of a broad view of site planning. It incorporates a lot of different details. And so it can be pretty difficult to come up with specific standards if you're not putting a lot of thought into it. And so that's one of the challenges other communities are having. Now, some of the ways people are getting around that are having specific checklists or point systems that allow you to take advantage of certain aspects of low impact development that makes sense on your site and exclude some practices that maybe don't make sense on your site. And so by using those types of systems, it at least gives you the opportunity to, to explain or to justify why you're using certain systems and avoiding others. But a lot of these communities are also relying on future state guidance, which will be coming and I will be probably involved in that.
Can you just explain for the, like, define the MS four so people might?
Yeah, MS four is the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit. It's basically regulated communities that are of a certain size and have a certain level of infrastructure. And they are basically, they're basically issued a permit that it comes down from EPA, but it's administered by the DEP. And so those communities, in order to upkeep their permit, they need to meet a certain number of minimum control measures. And basically they are submitting annually, I think it's in September or October, November, to the DEP, basically a report showing that they're meeting those minimum control measures. One of those includes like education on stormwater management. So, you know, educating the broader population on why it's important to pick up after your pet or, you know, not dump your used oil down storm drains, that kind of thing. And there's a bunch of other things that are required as well as like mapping outfall areas. But in the new round of requirements, they have to have a low impact development ordinance added to their, added to their town ordinance. And so that's where they're currently facing a little bit of challenge. But I, I just wanted to, you know, wrap up because this is my last slide. Well, my very last slide has my contact info. But I wanted to just put the vision statement for the town of Kennebunkport on here because when I was reading through the comprehensive plan, I just thought it really, at least it really resonated with the idea of low impact development. And now I actually can't read it from here, so I'm going to get a little bit closer. But the last sentence, or the last two sentences says, "As we adapt, we will preserve Kennebunkport's historic integrity, protect our natural resources, strengthen our unique small-town character while improving economic vitality. Our tree-shaved streets, scenic vistas, unspoiled coastline, classic architecture and beautiful landscapes will continue to inspire visitors and residents alike." And I just thought that that really, that really mixes well with the goals of low impact development. You know, maintaining that, those scenic characteristics that the community values so much. I think that there's a real crossover there. And just reading through the comprehensive plan really was, I mean, it was kind of inspiring because I saw you were also referencing like Strong Towns, which is a group that I've been following a long time. But it was just great to see that in the actual plan. And so, I don't know, I'm, I'm super optimistic about the future development of the town of Kennebunkport. And I'm not just saying that to get you to like me more. So thank you again for having me. If we go to this last slide, there you go. There's my contact information. Feel free to reach out. It's been an absolute honor being able to talk to you all. And if there are any lingering questions, I'm happy to answer.
I'm getting up because there are people probably on video. It's just some general comments.
Sure.
I'm not so optimistic.
Just so the public knows, can you?
Yes, I'm Nina Pearlmutter. I think some people here know me. I'm a thorn in the side of a lot of people on the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board and so forth. But I am a member of the Planning Board. I have been for many years in the town. I'm also a member of the Shade Tree Committee. That was a really nice presentation of low impact development.
Thank you.
Yes. The only criticism I have on it is you're from the Department of Environmental Protection and I think that should include animals as well, as well as insects. And so all of the, almost all of the windows that you were showing were high-impact bird-crashing windows. And maybe you might think on future developments, when you make up slides of looking at the kind of architecture it takes to keep birds from crashing into windows since we've lost seventy percent of our bird population. And that's just something that I pick on all the time on the Planning Board with developers. Anyway, as far as stormwater management, I think the town of Kennebunkport and the Planning Board handles it pretty well. We don't get, we do look very carefully at stormwater reports when subdivisions come in. We don't look at it so much when we're looking at non-conforming structures because there isn't much we can do there unless some butters come and tell us that they're concerned. And we don't get to deal with it on housing lots, which kind of perturbs me because we're looking at it from the perspective of, you know, the whole development. Are they going into vernal pools or crossing streams and what it takes there? But as far as green roofs, the only planning application that I've seen, and it was just a sketch plan, is the Colony Hotel is planning a green roof on one of their new buildings. Now they have a north division that they're working on and we haven't seen yet the application, the full application for the south division. But I know they had been talking about a green roof there. So again, it's, it's a municipal, not a municipal, but a commercial building. It's hard to put a green roof on a house. You need so much structure there. It's much easier to put solar panels up, which I just did, you know? But to put up steel beams and everything that will hold all that earth and water and snow is a whole different ballgame. I agree, there are lots of things you can do on house lots, but I don't see it happening. And just to pick on the DEP, okay? And I know it's not your, probably not your department, but I'm seeing more and more of these tier-one permits come through without any of the DEP personnel coming out and looking. We just had one. We've had several with your butters are really up in arms and finally got a DEP person out there to take a look at, you know, what the soil scientists were saying and things changed because it wasn't quite the way they were looking at it. And so the DEP looked at it a little differently. I won't say who that is because he's a very good soil scientist and I've used him before. But things like that happen. Another one in our neighborhood recently, the DEP never came out and looked at a wetland. Another one in our neighborhood recently, um, the DEP never came out and looked at a wetland and the butters didn't know anything about what was going on until a culvert showed up that rolled into the middle of the road that was about to be put in. And the whole wetland, the area was stripped before we knew it. And, you know, major trees were planning to be taken down. I don't know whether that will happen or not. But they were concerned because that wetland drains into a lower area where there'd been significant flooding. And of course, there'd been development in there. Our biggest problem, I think, is that we're getting a lot of growth. We're getting a lot of people coming in from more southern states like New Jersey, New York, Texas, and so forth. And they don't understand the environment. And they come from where they don't understand their own environment. So, you know, it's a matter of really educating. They come in and they don't realize that a northern environment like Maine, which is basically forested wetland and, you know, terminal moraine from a glacier, is a much more fragile environment than where they come from. Much more fragile. And you've got ledge and bedrock under there instead of soil. If you're from the Midwest, you know, your soil profile goes to about, up to the ceiling there, and you get lots of drainage, but you don't when you have ledges in between and puddles and everything. And I don't know how you educate these people. You know, they come in, they throw pesticides all over the lawn because the landscapers scare them, saying that you're going to get mosquitoes and ticks all over your kids and so forth. And the next thing you know, they're draining that stuff right into the wetlands. It's a real problem. We have a lot of new people in Kenny Bunkport. And I'm glad to see that a lot of them are families, and we've been wanting families. They're good people. They just don't know. They cut trees. They're cutting trees in Goose Rock's beach area with or without permits. And it's a real problem because they don't understand how trees take up water. And they're getting more flooding in the Goose Rock zones directly due to cutting of trees in some instances. So I'm not quite as optimistic. I don't know how you educate people except to start putting in more regulations, which people don't like because they want to do what they want with their property. I don't see rain gardens around here. I really don't. I have almost four acres, and I'm very proud of my wetlands. And I'm putting in gardens and things like that. I've cleared out bittersweet, but it's a lot of work. I mean, I'm considering, right now, I'm considering renting a mini front loader because I've got 12 yards of composted mulch that's going into the garden to help stop that rainwater from running right through it. You know, so I don't know where this goes. I, I think education is your key along with regulation. I don't think it should be just regulation alone. I think you have to explain to people why you need to do things. And you need to do it soon because you're getting more and more flooding, and you're going to get more and more flooding. So I don't want to see Kenny Bunkport turn into a suburban area like you have. I think your little tree squares are too small to support a tree as it grows. That's not enough water. I see a lot of them die around here as the supermarkets put in a teeny little grate for a tree. And next year, the tree is dead because it never had any water or the salt from the plows gets to it. I really am concerned about this. When I moved to Kenny Bunkport, my husband's family has been here since the 1600s. But I'm rather new. I'm only 20, 25 years or so. You know, it, it was a nice rural environment, and I, I enjoy it very much. It's not quite as rural as it was before, but it still is. And it still has a lot of potential to protect it, to protect those forested areas, to keep people from cutting down trees in their lots. But I think you have to move a lot faster than you are. And so that's my two cents.
Okay. Cody, to some of Nina's points, are there, um, do developers go and get certified as LID developers? I mean, is there a program in the state of Maine for developers to get like LID certified? Is there such a thing or?
So we, we don't currently have a certification program for low-impact development developers. We do currently have, I guess, developer or contractor certifications for other things. And so we have a network of education that we can provide, but we don't actually currently have a, a program for that. It's something that I've been looking into because I, I also agree. I think there's a need for that level of education. And, and I agree with a lot of your points about education being crucial and important. And that's why I, I try to come and, and give these presentations because I think it's part of the solution. And I'm looking at ways in the DEP to, to provide additional education to the public because I, I personally feel that that's part of our job a little bit, you know, being in public service in that way. But no, we currently don't have a, have an LID certification or anything like that. But I will take that into consideration and see what I can do to.
Isn't that something that should be specialized? I'm not sure. I, I wouldn't want to see the contractor, the, the onus going on them because then there's, there's the ability that things get forgotten. I would rather have like, if, if the process, if we, our community has a process where we're going to stamp something, it should come from a specialist. And that specialist should be the one that's certified, not the, I don't think the contractor should be it.
Well, no, I was, I was.
Well, let me finish. There's a chance that if, if it's all in that one person, you know, I would, for you, for example, the engineer, you pass that to the person that's going to submit, um, plans for, for example, a building, like, you know, the structure or integrity or this or that. That, we should really have that as part of our plan. The contractor should have to prove it and get that specialization. Certification should come from somebody else, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think it more should be directed towards the engineers that are submitting the permits and, and the plans. I think.
Hired by the contractor.
Yeah, a, a, and I do think that the, the contractors play an important role, at least during the construction phase of limiting the impact. And I think they already, we do have a really good contractor education system. John McClain's group in the Non-Point Source Pollution Training Center. They've got an incredible contractor training program, and so I think that they are already doing a very good job there. I, I see less training geared towards the actual designers of these, um, development projects. And again, it's not always the engineer. Sometimes you've got an outside developer or maybe a developer that has a, you know, an architect that's doing a lot of the design, and the engineer doesn't always have an opportunity to weigh in as much as I feel like they should in some cases. But there are also a lot of engineers that just, they've been doing, they've been designing these systems the same way for 20, 25 years. And it's not that this stuff is new. It's just there are, certain communities are placing a little bit more priority on, you know, conserving some of the area, maybe doing conservation subdivisions or, or providing additional levels of open space and, and limiting clearing. And I think that part of this is to approach the engineers and the designers and make them aware of what communities are seeing and what community, what the desires are. Because I, you know, I, I speak to engineers all the time, having to review their plans and everything. And so I can bring up points there, but I think there needs to be just a broader level of education to, to all of those folks.
I'm wondering to Nina's point too, whether real estate agents could have information that they could pass along to their clients when they're moving into town because if they are coming from areas where they don't have the same kinds of issues with the runoff and that sort of thing, perhaps that would be a good way for the homeowners themselves to know what to do and how they might take steps to preserve our environment.
I think that's a really good point, and it's something that we have discussed internally as well at the DEP, how we can specifically when relating to shoreline zoning because one of the challenges, again, is cutting trees because people want to create a view. But that often, or almost always, conflicts with shoreline zoning requirements and also leads to destabilization of the banks, the embankments and the slopes, especially in coastal ecosystems. Those tree roots have an important role to play in holding that soil in. And so if we were able to get the real estate agents educated so that they could provide that information to their clients, I think that we, we could potentially see some improvement in that respect. So that's definitely some good, that's definitely a good point that I'll bring back to my colleagues and see if there's a way that we can better implement that.
And not just a handout that they give people at a closing.
No, that stuff never works. People don't read.
Part of the actual closing where either the Realtor is educated and can give, give a lot of information about it or an additional person, just like you've got the lawyer there and the several other people at a closing.
Need a towns person to do that. The Realtors do not like to give any kind of instructions negative information.
What about, is it in the DEP purview or on your roadmap to do? Like if I got in the DEP website eventually someday, could I check a little link to get educated for my own residential of things I could do for stormwater runoff and?
Yes, we do, we do have a number of resources on the website. The DEP website's a little bit out of date, and it, they really, they need to update it and, and make it a little bit more user-friendly. And I think that there are a lot more resources we are lacking currently, just speaking honestly. I think that one of the areas where the DEP falls behind are like video resources, having short video resources on specific topics, I think, is a little bit more accessible than having a thick report that you have to read through. And so there are certain folks, including myself, working to make, to, to create more of those resources. It's just a slow process because we're also managing, you know, reviews of sites, going out to sites to inspect and, and all of those things. So it is a challenge. I mean, the state, I don't know if you know, is, is pretty understaffed. There are a lot of openings, which is probably partially the reason why there's, there's been so many challenges getting out and seeing sites. And actually, if I could just speak to that for a second, like, this isn't my purview. I'm not in that area. I'm not one of the ones that has to actually go out and inspect usually until something starts going wrong. But if you, if you apply pressure to the DEP, so if you inquire about specific projects, we are monitoring those emails and those, those messages. It doesn't always go through, so sometimes it takes multiple requests. Sometimes it takes calls to the on-call system or emails to the on-call system. But we, we do try to, to, you know, filter those requests. And we are understaffed, so it's, it is difficult to, to get to all of them, but.
So I want to keep the conversation on low-impact development if we could.
Okay. Yeah. Maybe, maybe we can discuss it after because I'd like to hear your criticisms.
In terms of stormwater runoff and low-impact development and wetlands, there is no way to contact the DEP if you don't know what's happening. When someone applies for a Tier One permit, a PBR, it's between the applicant and the DEP. A butters are not notified. The town is not notified until they come with their little certificate. And so there is no way to request, to make a request.
Understood.
Okay.
So you brought up a good point, like, maybe that's something we could look at for our town website in the future. If there is literature or examples, quick videos that they're going to be the good resource for, maybe we could tie it into ours. I don't know how, you know, want to over-clog up our website, but, you know, to her point, maybe a good point.
Yeah.
Something to add. So we educate our own residents.
Yeah, I wanted to thank Cody for taking the time to travel down here to Kenny Bunkport and to give this presentation. I could see that you'd put a lot of time and effort into your presentation.
It was excellent.
We do appreciate it. I will say, you know, what, you know, Nina brought up, you know, thank you for your service to the Planning Board and the Shade Tree Commission is spot-on on the importance of education while you're looking at regulation as well. They go hand-in-hand. And tonight, I think, was a good practice of education in the community because you're right, that things are in paper and brochures, they sit on a shelf or, and that's it. But this engage, engaging conversation is going to hopefully disseminate throughout the community through your interactions with your fellow neighbors and residents and family and friends. And that's, it's starting that conversation on the importance of stormwater management and how we can do a better job as stewards of the land that we are entrusted with. So I think tonight was a good practice, and certainly this conversation is going to continue in the weeks to come as you discuss LID in, in the future and other ways that we can conserve our natural resources here in Kenny Bunkport, so.
So thank you, Cody.
Thank you.
Okay, on to other business.
You know, the, the conversation came up about bird windows, and I wanted to just let you all know a public service announcement. We are having the annual mass bird migration that's currently under effect across the country. And so this is just a public service announcement to please remember to shut your lights off in your houses from 11:00 PM till 6:00 AM. That's when they're migrating across the country. And so your lights, exterior lights, internal lights that are on at those time periods are the critical times where they do hit into windows and, and have mass casualties. So please make sure to do your, your due diligence for our community and our wildlife.
Those are internal lights you're saying, inside the house.
Internal, and yep, and even external because sometimes they does distract them from the.
Go to bed.
Yeah, go to bed.
Go to bed and turn your lights off.
Yep.
All lights off.
Yep.
And you had mentioned something about windows being a problem in the, the pictures that he had. What is the problem with the windows?
Just bird strikes on especially, uh, uh, buildings that are built more vertically. There are ways to mitigate that, but it's, it's, again, it's, you need to intentionally put that into design practice, and that's something that I think that we can improve. And it's, it's a good criticism, and I, it's, I'm not saying that I didn't consider it. It's just something that, I don't know if I, if it's been brought up as much, but it's something that I'll look into, something that I might be able to.
So there are windows that are effective.
Just high-rise, like glare, big glare windows, like, hopefully, hopefully those aren't the buildings that we have in this community.
No, but I mean, just regular Anderson windows or something.
Yeah, birds, birds hit.
Right, but what do you do to prevent?
There are various things you can do with your windows. One is to turn the lights on, but also to prevent it during the day. There are little dots you can put on your windows. There are, especially during bird migrations, there are panels of wires and things like that. But when you're designing a house, the best thing right now is to have screens on the outside so they can see those screens. The other things are overhangs on windows. There's a whole, there are whole websites devoted to pages and pages of, for architects and designers to design windows that avoid bird strikes. You do see a lot of designs now where the windows are inset and there's overhang, and windows are inset and there's overhang and so forth so that the birds don't see reflections and think that, you know, they can fly right through. One of the worst problems is when you have municipal buildings or commercial buildings with inside atriums with trees and so forth. And you have lights on and birds think, oh, I'm going right into a forest. And, you know, you get thousands of them killed that way. But for residential buildings, you're, there are a lot of different solutions. If you look on Audubon websites, New York City has a whole, whole pages on that, I think.
But, but the simple solution is to turn off your lights from now until May 15th, so. Do your part.
Very good.
Okay. Any other business that we need to discuss? Anything from the town?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Uh, next meeting? Talk about that.
So that would be May 21st.
Okay, well, do we already have that set?
I do not have it, I mean, it's, that's what you're, it's first and.
Yeah, and what, what's, um, just to forecast out, what are we gonna?
We'll continue the conversation on LID moving forward and what you guys like to, to look at. I'm going to continue the conversation with Cody to continue, like, what triggers we want to look at, what standards we want to look at. Because SMPDC does have a model ordinance for you to look at. But that doesn't necessarily mean you have to adopt anything that's what's in there, so.
Perfect.
We'll take a look at it at the next meeting.
Are we going to start working to on 2003, LD 2003, the third bucket?
three, um, the third bucket?
May ninth? You mean, the public hearing on May ninth?
No, the third bucket.
Oh, yep, we can discuss that.
Because that has to go for the November ballot?
Yes. And I, yeah, it's, it's, yeah. We'll cover that.
All right. So May twenty-first at six PM?
Yes.
Okay.
And also make sure, May ninth, um, they are doing the public hearing at the Select Board meeting this Thursday, uh, for the, the public hearing of the land use ordinances.
And that starts at what time?
Uh, six o'clock.
Okay.
Yep.
Dylan, how might this whole idea of LID fit into form-based zoning? It, it would seem to me that if, if you're talking about wanting to have the gardens and the natural environment, and the way to be able to look at how to handle potential runoff, you know, form-based zoning would be an excellent way to do that.
It would be. Um, i- i- it takes a, a, a period of time to get a community to form base code, um, because it is such a difference from, uh, with the use base that we're so accustomed to. Um, but certainly, there's, these are performance standards that can go into our town-wide regulations under, uh, Section Six of our land use ordinance. You have, you have town-wide regulations and performance standards for any kind of development. So I would think that's where you would put this type of, um, put LID in that, in our ordinance. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Uh, hearing to other business, um, anybody give a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Host, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.